So the first. The first item this evening. Is a discussion on the Rack second and Penn project. I know we have Joan and I'm the trip. The second individual, but we'll turn it over to Joan and. We'll get it started. Good evening.
All right. Good evening. Thank you very much, Jeff. I have with me Susan Looney, Dr. Looney is the president of Rack and Vice President Ken Dearstein. Is Greg Boja on this call yet?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, you are there. Okay, there you are. I see you now. All right, great. All right, to to give a summary, we have prepared two draft ordinances that we are asking that city council consider for adoption. The first and most immediate concern is a point five six acre portion of the city right of way for Penn Street. Between South Front and South Second Street in the area of the Penn Street Bridge. Which we would ask be vacated to be annexed to the campus of Reading area community. For purposes of its revitalized entrance. The area and the improvements would include wayfinding signage stairs and improved pedestrian path. And planters. It will improve the appearance of the campus and the surrounding neighborhood. Rack has provided to the city zoning office. A rendering of the proposed signage and walkway that was prepared by Mullenberg Green. And along with its application for zoning permit that was submitted. At the same time as the proposed ordinance and and materials. We have submitted to the city clerk. And to the city solicitor's office, a draft ordinance, which is which is before you this evening. Draft quick claim deed in a form regularly utilized by city council. And aerials of the proposed vacated area. We also have prepared, and I believe that council has this. A meets and bounds description of the area which Rack is requesting to be vacated by the city. That meets and bounds description for that Penn Street right of way. Doubles as the description for a blanket easement that Rack would provide. For any and all utilities and for the continued public use of the sidewalk. The area is an area that's currently maintained by Rack that would that would obviously continue. We will prepare the easement agreement and annexation plan and subdivision plan, which also goes with the annexation plan. For review by the city solicitor's office and the zoning office and planning commission. Greg Boja, Boja Engineering has prepared the descriptions for the proposed vacated area. And annexation plan. I would ask that he be allowed to share the screen to show the area in question.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, he has access.
And before you get started, I just, I didn't realize Dr. Looney is here, Mr. Dearstein, so welcome and thank you for the presentation. We'll.
Thank you for having us.
Yep.
Yeah, we appreciate being on the agenda tonight and being first.
Okay, I was trying to share my screen. I'm not sure if it's able to yet.
Yeah, what what Mr. Boja is trying to bring up is an aerial view. Of the proposed vacated Penn Street right of way area there. Okay, now he's starting to. There it is. Okay. Mr. Boja, can you describe what this shows?
Sure, the existing Rack Hall is encompassed by the the red line work. And the yellow is the area of the existing city right away. There along Penn Street Bridge in the Penn Street. Then on the right side, it's a mirror image. If this would go forward in the proposed condition that we would annex that. Plus point five acres to the existing parcel where Burke's Hall is located. And then maintain the blanket easement that Joan had discussed earlier. And then we had Tim Crawl's recommendation, we pulled the sidewalk there out. Right where that's located at the corner of Second and Penn. As well as that lighting standard that he had asked for.
Right, the streetlight and sidewalk would remain, those would remain public, those that would not be, that would be an easement right there. For the city, the sidewalks would remain for for public use. But again, this is an area that is is already maintained by Rack. And that would continue, but this would allow Rack to control and improve that area. And it's really improving, not just the gateway to Rack, but also the gateway to the city of Reading. So we believe that this is this is a definite win win. You'll notice on the plan that the Penn dot right of way is shown. This area to be vacated is not within the Penn dot right of way. I've been in contact with the local permits manager for Penn dot Brett Clingle. I contacted him about probably about a week and a half ago. Summarizing what we were doing, summarizing that Tim Crawl. Had previously contacted him on July 28 regarding plans by the city in conjunction with Rack to vacate property in the right of way for Penn Street and in the area of the Penn Street Bridge. For the gateway purposes and annex it to Rack's property. Mr. Crawl advised Mr. Clingle, the city would be requiring. That the sidewalks and streetlights remain in the Penn Street right of way and not be included in the vacated area. Rack is certainly in agreement with that condition. I also reminded him that there will be a blanket easement with language in the easement agreement. Noted on the annexation plan for utilities of the city and Penn dot. And that the sidewalk would remain open to the public. I advised Mr. Clingle that we would be appearing tonight at committee of the whole. With a draft ordinance for vacation of this area of Penn Street. Asked him to contact me if he had any any questions, concerns or reservations about the idea. He emailed me back right away and his exact response was. If there's no transfer of Penn dot legal right of way. And the lighting and sidewalk is staying under city of right of way, we have no comment. If Rack has some intention of attempting to get driveway access to Penn Street in the future, that request would be denied. All access from the property shall be taken from Front Street or Second Street respectively. We have no plans for such driveway access, so that that shouldn't be considered an issue. We have also requested a similar vacation. Of a small area of Paper Street portion of Spruce Street. For purposes of allowing additional parking and security where it bisects to. Reading area community college properties. Council has before it the draft ordinance. Legal description and quick claim deed. We'd like you to consider that, but we are here mainly to discuss. The the Penn Street, the Penn Street vacation. The matter was in front of the city planning commission. At its July meeting, and I believe all of you have in your possession. A letter to that that the matter was before the planning commission and the planning commission. Is in agreement with with the concept. Does anyone have any any questions about what Rack intends? And the purposes of of this, because I also have a request to make as well, but before that, I'd like to take any questions from city council.
All right, members of the council, the board, world.
Good, Stan.
Joan, has there been any people coming into the to Rack from the community around the your area down there at the school? And making any inquiries or making any complaints or anything concerning what you anticipate doing?
I am not aware of any complaints, Dr. Looney or Mr. Dearstein, are there any complaints?
No, actually, since this is has been discussed in our campus master plan, which is fairly new. We've gotten community buy in and actually there's quite a bit excitement. About the opportunity for us to acquire this property. If it is vacated by the city and for us to enhance the beautification of it. So actually, just the opposite.
Well, I mean, I didn't hear anything, but I was interested in into what other people were saying, but this is good. If they're not complaining, but I was I was thinking that. People should be coming in there, making inquiries exactly what's going to take place. Instead of depending on what they see here on television. So I mean, I guess you're prepared if someone does come in to let them know exactly what's going on, right?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, it's always it's always best that citizens be informed of what's happening around them, and we hope that. Many people in the city are watching this broadcast and learning more about this. I'm certainly open to any questions and I'm sure that the college has opened any questions. If this ordinance is going to be considered for adoption, it's going to be advertised and. Copies will be available for public viewing and that may raise some questions at city hall and with Rack and I'm sure that. The city is also happy to answer any questions. I mean, we're very excited about this project.
Thank you, Joan.
Additional questions, anyone for Joan on the use of the project? All right, continue on Joan.
Sure, we have a a request and that is we're requesting that council. Allow the construction to proceed in the proposed area to be vacated. While this ordinance and while the annexation sub slash subdivision plan is pending. We are asking for consideration of this request to ensure that the beautification project. Can be put out on bids and completed by the 50th anniversary gala, which is on November 10. Which is going to be receiving a great deal of media attention due to its community significance and our special guest speaker. The anniversary gala and its publicity really present a great opportunity. To showcase the revitalization. Of both the of Rack and and the city of Reading as a part of of this and and the College Town Initiative and all of the exciting things that are happening in the city. So we hope that city council will both allow the ordinance to proceed. For the vacation, but also grant the request and allow Rack to proceed. With the with demolition in that area and with construction. Again, the construction is going to be signage, walkway, benches and planters that are shown in the drawings, which have been forwarded to the city. With with the submissions in June. If allowed, we would continue to proceed with the vacation, which would be voted on. The earliest date with the holding over of the ordinance and the requirements under the third class city code be the October 4 meeting. And then with the understanding that Rack does so at his own risk, which happens anytime there's development before the full approval. And as with any project, there would be insurance in place and Rack would post any security required by the city. And also be happy to discuss any indemnification agreements that the city might want for its own comfort in proceeding with it, but we would like very much. To have permission to to proceed with the construction.
All right, comments, questions or comments, council members?
Yeah, wait a minute, and I'm sorry I have to wear my mask, but so be it. First of all, thank you for being so proactive about this project and it certainly is important as far as the gateway to the city. And I would trusting that I know you will be doing what you need to do to protect the city. If it need be for you to move forward, I would support that wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Goodman-Hennessy. I appreciate that. And I see that the city solicitor is is also on on this on this call. Well, I would be glad to discuss. Any agreements that would need to be to be put in place.
Yeah, sure, we could certainly discuss that.
All right, yeah.
All right, any other comments, council members? So Joan, I'm just curious, that strip, you know, pre Rack. There used to be a road, I know, on the other side of the bridge. I remember standing there in June of 1972, believe it or not, not that I'm that old, but. I'm assuming that there was probably a similar setup there, and that's why it never really got incorporated with what was eventually the hotel there at some point.
That 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 probably that probably is is the case. Usually there is a history. Behind this. Greg, are you aware of any of any history?
Yeah, I I saw the same thing as Mr. Waltman, that that was where additional road went down to Front Street.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a critical need and you never know what the future holds, but. It's essentially been college property. For the past how many years? So it's just a matter of just making it happen. So I don't I don't have a problem with it. I'll go over to the rest of the members. And before we do that, I don't, as long as you tie up the knots on the beginning ahead of time, I don't think that's an issue as well.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Council President, Mr. Mayor Moran, if I may.
Okay, Eddie, then Donna, I'm sorry.
Um, my apologies, my phone decided to ring. I just wanted to acknowledge that I too had visited the site in question. Back last year with Pedro was around and we were on board then. I want to acknowledge I'm on board now, so. You know, I would ask the council to please support it. As I have in the city's behalf, we support.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Eddie, Donna?
Yes, and just one thing is as. To President Looney and the other folks from Rack, as you go forward with this. And as we approach our 275th anniversary here in the city, there are some great old pictures of what had existed. Down there back in the day, so I would ask respectively. As we go forward to 2023 and will certainly be working with with all the other institutions of higher education. But if you could perhaps prepare some signage, some some of those pictures that could be displayed along the way. That as people walk down that way, they can they can see what existed there. In prior days, and I know there's drawings that go back to the very start of the city. As well as pictures that go to early to mid to 1960s of the. Early to mid 20th century, so it might be nice as a juxtaposition and to educate people as they walk by to see what had been there and what is there now. As as times and places change, so that would be my request to all of you and we'll be happy to work with you at the history center.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Misery.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Additional comments or questions, anyone? Council administration, anybody?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead, Marcia.
Just a question, and I not sure who it can be directed to. But how much of that area is on the floodplain? Because I think when you talk about the history of Reading, that's when that area really got transformed after Tropical Storm Magnus.
It's interesting because the first thing I thought of when with the council president's question was when said June of 1972 was standing there during Hurricane Agnes.
Go back, go back in history annals to 1850 and the fresh hat that occurred then, that made Agnes look like minor, if you can believe the history and the report. So yeah, it is, it's clearly in a in a floodplain, but the. Again, the history of how the city was transformed after those, you know, catastrophes of the river is very interesting. Because it really was the the starting point for the city before it at the school. So I heard a very historic area.
Okay, any, if there are no additional comments, we will. You know, I'm not hearing pushback at all. For 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 the Rack officials, for Joan. I don't sense we're going to have any issues. I ask if any council members have any heavy duty pushback. Support it. I would work with Frank, just to get a little MOU, whatever you need for moving forward ahead of time.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, the Solicitor's Office can can help me with, can help guide us towards any agreements that are needed for the. For the protection of of the city for, you know, for beginning this project prior to the the full completion of the vacation.
All right, thank you so much for your commitment to downtown and this effort is part of your ongoing efforts and. Most importantly, enriching the minds and the spirits of the young people. Who eventually take it all over.
Important, really.
Really appreciated, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Procedurally, procedurally, where where should this, what is next? Procedurally, will this lay over?
We just need it formally to be introduced to coordinate that Joan with Linda.
Okay.
What's this introduce, you know, lay over for two weeks and we'll vote on it right away.
Okay. Twenty eight, it has to lay over for 28 days.
Okay.
So if you get it to us this week, if possible, we can put it on for.
The 13th, I already have it.
Yeah, or she already has it, yes.
And the ad was already sent to the writing eagle, so that's in the works as well.
All right, great.
All right, keep us posted. If you need anything, thank you again, and I'm sure Eddie and the administration will walk you through everything else as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. Okay, council, next we have a discussion on Bernhard's Dam in the Park area. This has obviously been a issue we've been. Trying to tackle for for many years with many administrations. It's not an easy one. It's it's got its own complications. But I know our neighbors in Mullenburg are always interested in where we're at and where things are going. It always has this imminent threat over it, but I know just a few years ago, we had that extremely heavy rain and the dam held up just fine, but. We still need to be responsible and finally get it to a point where everyone feels safe. So it's certainly not anybody on the calls. Reasoning is why it's been delayed. It's just not an easy thing. I think the last time we talked about this issue, we were going to try to. Lower the dam to examine it and how to do that and which was the best way. It was complicated. The valve didn't work and. Lowering the breast of the dam wasn't an easy process either. So I don't know, Stan, if you're giving us the update today, whoever's fortunate enough to. To give us the update, welcome.
My pleasure, Council President. This is obviously a difficult time. To talk about the dam, especially seeing the hurricane eye to these past few days. And I can let you know that when I came to work for the city, Pedro. Had me work with Tim Crawl on this and we went back and forth and this past year in July, he and I both stayed up at the at night, thinking that there would be an issue with the dam. Incorrect, sir, it did hold, however, that that has now come to pass and. What has come to our attention is the insurance company is forcing us to de-water. That is meaning to lower the level of the water of the water itself, and from there we will then hit a phase two and a phase three. I'm here today to discuss. As of the first of the year, the city of Reading will not be able to have that dam insured, number one. There has been plans on the board to de-order and to then sample, which is what we will then do. We have a bid out for the actual de-watering as we speak. In consultation with David Bean and then with Kathy Karan Myers, we are then going to get into a phase two. The phase two will be to understand what the sampling is and. David, through his expertise and Kathy as well, and my my past life and understanding brownfields very well. Is we're then going to possibly. Work with the county along with the EPA and possibly super fund sites to then assist in a possible cleanup. In the phase three, we'd then talk about the actual remediation of what we do need to perform. And at that point, we would then talk further with PayDep along with the US EPA, which is driving this. As and as aside, there was a guest speaker a few weeks back at the annual conference. Through Pennsylvania government and with. American Public Water Association, and it was asked. Did Reading de-water yet and lower lower the level so that there's not an issue with the dam? And at that point, nothing has happened, however, we now will move forward. So we we have a plan. We we would like to then look and understand what the conditions are. However, this is the this is the other contention. And speaking with David on this. What do we want to do with this surrounding lands? Because there has been an ecosystem that has developed over the. Hundred plus years into something so totally different than just a stream bed. I was there again today and I do I do stop by and inspect. We do have issues with the spillway as you were just mentioning also. Some of the culfer dams are starting to degrade. We need to address quickly. However, we will, once it is de-watered. We will then inspect the dam. It is the contention of PayDep that we remove the dam. However, at when we get further, we can then understand the physical construction because there's no, as you said, you talked about valves, there's no real blueprints in how this was built. And I can tell you, she was built very well, very sturdy, but you just don't know. So that's why we're moving forward on this through through careful work with administration. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Stan. A lot more happening than I realized, but you know, it needs to happen, so whether it's. Moved along by others or we're guiding a light, it's good justice. See us get get it going. I know lots of people have lots of concerns. I don't even know X side status anymore as an organization.
Yes, I have been researching the X side. I actually was involved in an X side facility in Allentown and some other. Possibly worse chemicals like acadmium and a few other things and. David Bean, who is very instrumental and has, along with Kathy, has some very good contacts within the. State PayDep and the EPA and as well as mine. That there may be some funds available to help us through. So we're just going to play it one step at a time cautiously, but very optimistic. We're going to do what is correct. For the city of Reading and the residents, because it is it is a very nice area, but there are some serious challenges and. And as Bill will then address in terms of, and I don't want to use the term here today, Bill, I don't want to get anybody a little concerned about what you're going to say, and as we discussed what. On Alani is, but there is an area that we would have some serious issues with, not necessarily those adjacent to the dam, but downstream, if you will. And we've had issues. Mr. Jones told me. Years back that there was a a structure that failed underneath Fifth Street and across the city, nearly $500,000 to repair. And those are some of the things, the underlying factors, what we need to address.
All right, so let's hope you have the council members for questions and comments. I'm sure there's plenty. We'll start with Donna, then Marcia, and then we'll go.
I just I just hope as we do this, we really do need to have a meeting with the residents in Mullenburg who live around there out of courtesy and. You know, respect to them, because even if we own the property, those folks who live around there are very invested in it. And really need need the updates that we need to provide them. So. I would request the administration consider doing that as soon as possible. We had one back in 2019, I believe that was very productive. And we certainly owe them owe them that explanation because that is an area that people move to, particularly because of the surroundings. And now with the changes that will be coming, though. that, that will be a, a huge concern to the folks down there. We have to be good with this point.
Thank you, Donna. I defer to administration and the body in terms of, of something, um, to that effect, but I defer, please.
Yeah, I think once we have a clear timeline and what we're going to actually be doing, when we're going to be doing it, what the various options will be, I agree with Donna, we'll, we'll reinstitute a community meeting out there. Probably in collaboration with the administration so that we're all on the same page and, uh, we can give them actual information.
So totally agree, if I may, you know, like we have since the beginning of this administration to be as transparent as possible to make sure that we inform our community of changes and activities and, uh, uh, things that are happening. Um, so I definitely encourage that we do that. Uh, and, and, and I think Jeff, you hit it right under the nail. When, you know, when we have all the appropriate information, we'll probably be best to, um, outreach.
Yeah. Marcia?
Yes, and I think it's so important, having grown up in that area. Actually, I was in the Muhlenberg Township part of College Heights, so I went by the dam, played there as a child and never realized the contamination. I think it's very important. Our previous public meeting that we had, we had, uh, our, the, uh, representatives from the state, uh, Senator Schwan was there. And I think it's important because it's a joint decision between, uh, the DEP and also a fact that hasn't been introduced before is the liability of the city that we have all of that to present. The neighbors are not going to be happy and understandably so. They thought that they were buying homes that were in a very serene area, but be it that, we, we have to do what is, uh, best for the health and the welfare. And so I understand the problems. I also believe as we do that, we need to look at some of the other issues. Maybe, uh, Mr. Murray will be addressing that, but there are a lot of, uh, water issues along what was referred to as Spring Valley Road. Uh, and there also is an empty, uh, reservoir. And I apologize, I have to go mute now.
Um, Marcia, thank you. Bill and I have been discussing along with administration. Bill made a, a very, um, a very good, strong presentation in terms of the commitment for that, but I would, I defer to Bill and Abe now on that, but yes, we have addressed, we have looked at that part of our plans.
All right. Additional comments or questions, council?
Jeff, is, uh, the chief handy?
Which one?
Reading chief.
Which one? Tornelli or Stapp?
Is there a question, Strack?
Yes. My concern is that was always a hangout for a lot of vehicles late at night. A lot of things were going on over there. Uh, is this still a problem out there or was that broken up completely?
Well, that would be a, a question to ask the Muhlenberg chief.
Well, they, they both used to. Because it was city property, okay?
In Muhlenberg County.
Yeah, they used to vote. In fact, I'll tell you what, I used to have to patrol and it was always a bad hangout. I think, Marcia, you and I discussed this some time ago, right?
Yeah, there were very, uh, varied uses for the parking lot behind Bernhard's Dam. I won't say anything more.
Okay, thank you.
And just to give everyone an update, I was reading, you know, X side technologies bankrupted chapter eleven in twenty twenty. There was a trust established for some cleanup focused more so on the facility. I don't know how much of that will be eligible, but I'm sure the DEP and EPA are aware of it, Stan. I did send you a link to that article.
Yes, thank you. Um, and we were discussing that trust. Uh, David is well aware also and correct. A lot of that was for the physical infrastructure, not necessarily where the fallout was on rainwater and which, which collected into Bernhard. Thank you.
All right. Additional comments or questions? All right, Stan, we'll look forward to, you know, uh, anything you could do to give us kind of a, a, a one-page overview and suspected timelines that you think certain ideas, but certain decisions will be made or certain analysis will be made. We can kind of use that with, uh, Abe and Eddie and figure out when the good time would be as far as amount of information to set something up out there. It sounds like we're still a little away from that, but uh, anything you could do to keep us surprised would be helpful.
Jeff, I will. Um, our bids are due after Labor Day and I will, um, make sure the mayor and Abe are well aware of what is going on and make a presentation uh, to those gentlemen and, and the three of yous and council can make a decision in terms of how to move forward.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right, um, we're going to move on then. We have Bill here to talk about, uh, Onaloni Dam. So Bill, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Um, I don't know if Fed, Frank Dombowski or the managing director want to make an opening statement. If not, I'll get right to it by sharing the screen.
True. Abe, you go ahead, Abe.
Uh, we, we've had a meeting. Uh, Bill, Stan, the mayor and I have had a very good meeting to discuss the conditions of the dams, what needs to be done, how many residents would be impacted as well. So it's definitely something we're going to take very seriously and we welcome this opportunity to have council members not just listen to the conversation, but also to ask any relevant questions as well. And to Stan's point earlier, this has become an issue in terms of insurance as well. And we're keeping a really close eye on that also because it does have, uh, financial ramifications. Bill?
Good. And so first, thank you for the opportunity to present, uh, this idea and project, uh, to you guys that'll be sign, very significant in size monetarily and more importantly, in the intergovernmental cooperation and the, um, and as, as Stan said earlier, it's, it's probably not at the best of times with all the flooding that's going on down in the, in, in the, um, southern states to be talking about things like this, but I guess there's probably no such thing as a good time. And I found it interesting, Donna's comments are right on point about the history of Reading and flooding and, um, the importance of how we got to where we are today. So, and a lot of these things that we're talking about were solutions to those problems back in the day. They're no longer solutions. They're actually challenges. So just so we can understand what we're the area that we're talking about here, I ma, I put this map up here. So I'm, I'm hoping you can see it. The, uh, Onaloni Lake is up in here. The dam breast is at the first mark here. So all the water comes into the tributaries. It comes down into the lake. And then it runs down to Maiden Creek to our water treatment plant. And then it goes over from the treatment plant to the pumping station. And then it goes either, um, number three different ways. We have a distributing water from the pumping station. This is the intersection of the Schuylkill River and the Maiden Creek. I point that out now for later reference in the presentation. So you have an idea of, um, what we're talking about here. So a little, um, dam information so we can understand the dam's just about a hundred years old. It was built in the twenties. There are actually, when we talk about the Onaloni Dam, there are actually two parts of it. The lower part would be the dam. The upper part is the bridge that carries the traffic across it. The purpose of this impoundment was to create a fresh source of water for firefighting and for potable water to be drank and, and utilized. On a normal day, thirty point nine million gallons of water go across this dam breast here at about a one foot high level. So I'd like you to just remember that number thirty point nine. It becomes real relevant. So back around twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, um, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, uh, addressed the issue of the dam's safety and the stability of it. And then they requested Ra'wah to conduct a dam study. Um, that book that you see there right now represents one point three million dollars of a study. Um, the study then, uh, makes some conclusions and there's basically three conditions um, that they're concerned with. If this is the dam, the triangular part, you're talking about overturning or the dam actually topping over top to bottom, sliding where the dam would slide on its base or breaching, which is probably a bigger concern, the largest concern. And that means that either side of the dam would get compromised. That's more common with, um, dam breaching than anything else. It's usually a breach from the sides. So, um, what would happen if the, if we had a breach? If we had a breach, Ra'wah would cease operations as our treatment plant and pumping stations would be destroyed. This would take months, maybe a year to repair or replace. The results would be catastrophic to the city. Um, the study estimated the cost of the required improvements at that time in twenty sixteen to be approximately twelve point nine million dollars. Um, the reason, um, to think about this, why, why so much damage? It's because of the locations of the plant that I showed you and the pumping station. There's another, uh, operation there called our centrifuges that would also be destroyed. Um, getting a, a backup water, um, we would get some from our neighboring communities. Um, there is a potential project we hope to bring forth to the, at the county level to give, uh, get another authority to be able to supply Reading a lot more water. Obviously, we use about, uh, fourteen million gallons a day. That's probably more than all the water capacity that our surrounding community could give us to keep us, but put us back in business. Um, you might remember the storm of twenty twenty where Isaias went through. Um, this is actual damage that was done. That top left-hand corner is the corner of the dam. It's actually the bridge. Um, and what happens is, is there's infrastructure underneath this red clay. The red clay then has a layer of topsoil on it. And the water runs off the road. It then created a crevice and that crevice went between the topsoil and the clay and washed it down. So you can see the potentials there for, um, you know, damage to be done. Then of course, the question becomes is this is a, and it's an old wheel graph. Um, and basically what it does, that measures the amount of water going across the dam. So this one here is from July twentieth to, uh, July second to July tenth. You can see if you look at it, it's pretty stable. There was obviously a couple of little rainstorms that increased the flow a little bit, but nothing notable. The next one is a similar graph. This is, uh, I believe the week after, the same thing. It's pretty stable. No rain, one little spot on it. Then we get to the Isaias storm. And you can see the dramatic difference. If you start in the middle of the page, we had a normal week going, it rained. You know, that wasn't dramatic. It was a, you know, increase, but we're used to those kinds of things. Then it started to come down and then Tropical Storm Isaias went through north of the city. So a lot of us don't think, you know, too much of that storm because it really didn't do a whole lot to the city. But north of the city, it dumped lots and lots and lots of water. This is the increase in the water. You can see it. It doesn't mess around. It comes down and it goes right towards the top. This graph is around midnight. Um, myself and three other Ra'wah old timers, quite frankly, we stood at the dam breast with the police with Brian Godshaw on the phone because there was the oldest guy, he was forty-three years experience, had never seen the water that high ever. It normally runs about a foot to or less. It was almost four feet above the dam breast. Now, um, that's goes back to that number I introduced earlier at thirty point nine. On a normal day, you were at a hundred and ninety-five. So you were six, seven or eight times greater the water level. And, and what you have to understand about the lake is uh, and the dam, you're measuring it at the dam, but the water is coming at the top of the lake. So the lake doesn't just rise. The water pushes towards the dam. It's coming out of the tributaries upstream and all that increase in volume is coming down to the dam which was put there to impound the water. So it's going like a funnel. It's going where it's directed. The, um, the only dam stability improvements level importance, um, is ensuring the safety of the dam is founded in our emergency action plan. These are DEP, DEP required plans. The city has them for every dam. We have one for, for this dam. And it's to safeguard the lives as well as reduce, uh, property damage of the cities living within the dam's potential downstream flood or what they call an inundation area. To give you an example of our inundation area, when we, every year, we have to put notifications out to all municipalities, um, that may be affected if there was a, be a, a, um, a, a catastrophe. We deliver to like forty-eight different municipalities between Lee'sport and all the way down as far as I think Coatesville is the furthest one we go to. So the entire stretch of the Maiden Creek out to the Schuylkill, all the way down, all the, all the way down to that end of the town. And that would be affected by that. A sudden dam failure would affect Main Creek down the Schuylkill and then extend on both sides of the river down as far as Phoenixville. Um, at the intersection, remember that intersection I showed you where the mading creek right by the plant meets the Schuylkill River? The, the flow on, of the water coming off of a, a breach would be so harsh that it would hit that intersection. Water would actually flow downstream, which is its natural flow, but it would actually push upstream for two miles up, up, up the stream is what they're predicting that the water would actually, you're going to hear about this because there's some rivers doing it now down south that are actually flowing. I think the Mississippi River today flowed backwards. Um, that's how much, um, you know, this would do. And what you have to think about is if, if where you have a breach, there's going to be some kind of major storm going on. The Schuylkill River is going to be full already. So it has no place to go. So even against the full river, you're going to have such force coming down that river, you're going to be able to reverse that river and then all the way down south. Um, the damage just is incredible. Um, there is a tremendous amount of municipalities, township, boroughs, the cities, counties that would benefit from the improvements that the study, you know, identified should be considered. Um, the federal government should be involved. The state government should be about county and local governments. The state has a road that goes across the dam. Um, the big thing for the city is Ra'wah goes out of business and that's a problem. Um, it, it would be really, really difficult to overcome. So the idea here was to get this issue in front of council and in front of the administration so that they could start to be considered for this COVID relief money and what's expected of it. Um, I want you to keep in mind that authorities do not receive any money whatsoever directly. Any money that we get comes from either the city, the county, the state. We have to get it from that. That's because we're an authority and they kind of look at us and in reality, we lease the system from the city. So they kind of look at it as this is a city issue. This is a lot more than a city of Reading issue. This is an issue for Berks County, Montgomery County. And, um, Stan, I'm sure is going to add in there later, the effects when your sewer treatment plant gets affected. Um, so those, all, all those legacy projects and, and all those different sources that are available should definitely be brought to the table on a project like this. Um, it meets everything that these projects are looking for. And by that, um, the stakeholders are obviously, we've discussed them. But when you start talking about uh, the city's going to have a rub, the county is going to have a metric and a scoring system. And the factors that are common are compliance, meaning compliance to a regulatory request, either a consent order or a, um, um, just the, uh, just something like this where we're on DDP's radar. They're looking for it. Uh, this is basically as I explained to the mayor and to, um, the managing director, you're on notice that you've got an issue that needs to sooner or later be taken care of. And then there's the conservation and the devastation to the land and the properties that will happen. The economic development. Um, if, if, if guys come in and they start looking to invest along the river, the first thing they're going to want to know is what happens upstream here. So, you know, having an issue upstream could, could definitely thwart economic investment. Um, partnerships is a big deal. They want to see, um, multi-disciplines using those, their funds, bring coordinating together um, to do projects like inter-community benefits. One city, three counties, one city, multiple townships and boroughs. It's well documented. Um, and the big one, quite frankly, for Ra'wah in this is the intermunicipal, uh, cooperation. And why that's a big one for us is if we go forward with this, one of the opportunities is for Ra'wah, even as a tenant to participate. Um, Pennvest loans are really, um, the, the interest rates and the, and the, the interest free money is mandated for this intermunicipal cooperation stuff. There'll never be, you know, if we, if we go forward and we get a project off the ground, I'm looking at, you know, Ra'wah being able to contribute in a, you know, interest-free or low interest rate, you know, bond and or loan that we'd be able to, and participate as a partner in this. So my, my purpose tonight was to get an introduction there. So my, my purpose tonight was to get an introduction there, uh, out on the table so that folks could talk about it. And then I'll be glad to, you know, and I'm sure that Stan might wanna add something and then we can open it up.
Well, before you do stand, Bill, just give us, I mean, I'm trying to understand what are the top two or three efficiencies, if you will? And what are we talking about from a scope of work standpoint, costs, timelines? I mean, what, what are the biggest fears and how do they get remedied?
The biggest fear is a breach and the breach, um, uh, what they have now, Jeff, is a lot of better technology and design work for the breaching of the support structure around the dam and around the bridge, that area there. Um, pardoning, pardoning of the impoundment, so to speak. And there's better ways and new ways of doing it. And that's what they're looking for you to do versus, you know, as I have a picture up there now, you know, showing you that obviously, you know, it's worked.
So it better fortifying the dam and the, and the surrounding area of the dam? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, the, and I will tell you that, you know, the dam is inspected every year. The dam is in good shape. And, and as is the bridge, every year there's work that, you know, that has to be done. They come out, they inspect. Uh, we do as much of it ourselves as we can. And then we have, this year we got a small bid will be going out for maybe fifty thousand dollars worth of concrete patching work and stuff. And we keep it in good, in good repair. But the fact is, is we're not really discussing the dam or the bridge. Here we're talking about the impound that, uh, the, the rest of it, so to speak.
Gotcha, gotcha. So what, what are the costs? Is there level one, level two, level three? There's a golden, uh, there's a, let's get it by, what, what, what are we looking?
So it, so in 2016, the projection was twelve point nine million dollars to, uh, meet it the way DEP was recommended to be done. The Ra'wah went back to them and said, there's another way can we use this? And, uh, the DEP basically said, no, we don't want it that way. We want it done this way properly. If you're gonna do it, do it properly and spend, you know, the thirteen million. The, the biggest problem, Jeff, is, you know, this is, um, Ra'wah in the city, I, you guys have heard me say it. We are a department of the city. No matter when anybody wants to think, um, we're not totally independent. We don't own it all. And it's tough. I mean, for Ra'wah to take on a, a project like this, that would definitely affect rate seriously. But, you know, these are different times we live in and there's a lot of federal, state, local money that's out there. If it's intended for legacy projects, there's no better legacy project that you're gonna see or hear of in the whole county. I follow this stuff. This is, this is huge.
All right, Bill, thank you. No, I, we look forward to getting into those numbers and I'm sure you guys have some capital reserves put aside towards these efforts. I mean, we haven't, they're not been unknown to us, but I, I hear what you're saying. So, yeah, I mean, as we move forward, I don't wanna scare the world, but we, we have a solid dam. We do need some reinforcement of, to your point of these embankments. It's something we've been aware of and it's something we're gonna continue to pursue. We'll go to Stan and then we'll open it back up to everybody. Stan, did you have a comment?
Um, not necessarily a true comment, but just to, um, actually to mirror both of your thoughts that there is, there is an issue that's going to need to be addressed, number one, and especially with the city having true ownership. It's gonna have to come through the city and their procurement, uh, policies, number one, or rather, number two. But, um, is it inherently gonna fail that we cannot tell you, Bill and I, nor the experts can tell you that? However, I will tell you that if there is something that could possibly happen, knowing my luck some days or Bill's or whatever luck, it will, and it will happening at a time. We, it'll be in the evening. Uh, one thing that I was going to also say, and then Bill elaborated on it, is where the issues would lie if we have a partial of the earthen dam area that does happen to, um, open. There would be that onrush, but not only would we not get more, um, water to our, uh, into our sinks, but we will also not be able to flush our toilets. Uh, the wastewater treatment plan along with the one in Wyom missing would be basically, um, um, flooded out. And those are some of the things we're gonna have to address and, and be cognizant of. But, um, uh, we have talked in administration at length and Bill has talked to his and then we, our thoughts are, um, understanding what Bernhardt is coming out for a, um, an RFP to understand the construction. We have a very good knowledge, but we need to have something in place that would then bring us to the next level to bring to you and council in current day, what is truly there. We do have all the historical numbers. We have the historical geotactical, but we need to know it of today's, uh, current site conditions, cause that assessment done in sixteen did not count for what happened this past year in July. And I would like to understand the earthen part more so than some of the, the concrete work.
All right. Thank you, Stan. Uh, council members, we'll start with Donna and then we'll.
Just a, just a quick, um, sort of a media question. Um, Isaias probably had less water coming through than what's projected for, um, for this coming storm on Tuesday, Wednesday. Concern, your, 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 your preparations for it? And I realize this outside of the scope of this, but to me, it's all, it's all put together.
So, um, the preparation, so we, so we're real clear about that is the preparation is mandated through the DEP and all these emergency planning. You're, you, there's nothing we can do except really, I'm planning on being up late at night at the dam breast, watching that graph. Believe it or not, I showed you that graph. That's the oldest technology we have. We have three different ways of measuring that height. One is to actually look at, there's a measure, like a ruler on the side, you grab, you look at it. That's beautiful. But that doesn't tell you the whole story because that was put there, you know, forty some years ago. Then you have this and then you have modern technology. The one that we really helped us was this one here because along the way, Donna, the emergency plan says when the dam hits this point, Brian Godshaw, who's on the phone with us up there, he has to then issue a downstream warning that the dam is, is reached, and we were within inches of that. And we watched that thing stop and it's a little ink made. It just has a little ink that comes out. And we just watched it sit there and we could see the dot getting bigger, which meant it wasn't going up.
Do you think there'll be more water with this storm than there was with Isaias?
I, I have a real fear based on it and, uh, Stan will tell you, we just got, you know, within the last hour, uh, an email confirming that, uh, the, the state officials are very, very concerned about the amount of water that's gonna be dumped as a result of this storm. Yes. And, and honestly, I wish we could do more. I'm sure Stan would say the same. There's just nothing you can do. You know, and honestly, there's nothing that can be done in the next three years. It's, it's like we can get going on it. This, these projects that we're talking about here, this is a true nineteen thirty project. You know, this is a WPA project. I did a little research on the projects that were done with during those years. And, um, this one here to me exceeded all of them. And there was some very good stuff that was done back then. It's still there today, including our plant. Had a lot, you know, a lot of that money went into our plant. So no, I just financially, and, and you guys all know me and the money. I, I, I think it's a critical part of what I do. There's no way that any one of the entities here should share the burden of this, considering all of the beneficiaries of it. And they all have, every one of them, every vertical has money that's available. And, you know, if, if you're concerned about failures and the economic effects of failures, this is one that I, I would tell you that, uh, at the bottom, uh, at the top of the, top of the list. Now, um, I did, if I could, I wanted to address, um, somebody brought up the, the story, the Hagel Gale. Um, and just say that that is on the list. Um, and, and Ra'wah, I could give you ten, I'm like Stan, I could give you, spend every dime you have. But, um, um, we're trying to say, no, let's do what would really have a long lasting impact to meet these, these guidelines. And Hagel Gale does meet that, but that's a second project that if we decide this is too lofty, that we'll come back to you and ask you to help us with that, to get that back in service. Cause that has the potential between seven and fifteen million gallons of water to be available to the system for case of emergencies, which, you know, can be distributed in a different way than it was in the past.
All right. Um, so just to continue on, I, I, again, the dam, as far as we understand, is pretty firm, but we do need to get this thing shored up. I, I don't wanna scare the public too much. I mean, the dams are always at risk, but there's, there's not new information here that tells us something's changed from three months ago. It's just, we have these mandates. We need to be proactively on top of them. I, you know, where the money comes from, we'll figure it out. I, I just wanna make sure we got the right, um, next steps in order from a, from a construction standpoint. What we need to do is clear and then we can go back and figure out the money because we don't. This isn't something to take chances with. We, we have to get it done. It's, it's not, that's something we consider. It's what we do. Yeah, Eddie, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, council president, I also wanted to add that, yeah, we, uh, Bill had definitely had given his, his presentation recently uh, to us and, and very detailed. And I would even dare say that we are, uh, seeking in a governmental, uh, cooperation to leverage funds to pay for any potential repairs. So this is not just a city of Reading issue.
Okay, um, Marcia?
Yes, uh, and I'm glad, Mayor, that you made that statement because I think when I heard Bill speak, he spoke about, okay, we're gonna be out of water. When a dam of that volume breaks, that supplies all the water, that runs all the infrastructure for the majority of the county, it is a, it's a disaster. And we don't wanna scare people, but we also have to be realistic about the age of our infrastructure and what needs to be done to address it. So I think the most proactive way, and I don't agree with you, Council President Waltman, I don't think you try to figure out where the money's gonna come from. You need to look at the scope of the project and at the very beginning, say, who are the partners that have to support this? You don't come up with it. It's for, it's, uh, economic development and it's for the safety and the health of the whole county. So I would be in support of having the mayor take the leadership and working with other elected officials to be able to bring folks together and be able to say, we have a project that requires it. We have some funding that we can tap into. We have to look at all the funding sources and come up with a plan. And it shouldn't be in reaction to the fact that there's, uh, federal money that's now available. It really should be unavailable and, uh, because the project needs to be done.
Well, Marcia, that's the point I was trying to make. The money isn't the issue. We'll, we'll find the money. We gotta make sure we have clarify, protect people and then we'll figure out the money. I, I don't know if you didn't understand my comment, but it, let's just make sure we're clear on what the critical work, the scope of work is. Let's get the number and then the mayor and Abe and the administration will help lead the way with us and other entities to figure out where we get the money. There are lots of creative ways. This is not something to play with. It needs to be done. Uh, let's get done what needs to be done and move forward. I don't, you know, this is not like a park improvement or a, you know, some new, this is an absolute, so. As people stated, so I, 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 I don't, uh, what I don't wanna do is scare people to think that it's gonna fall apart tonight. But it, it is an important project and any of these have that potential. We know that, but we're not, we're not clearing today that that's what's happening.
Jeff, so if, if I could just add that, um, the, the purpose of me going to the administration and you guys now is it needs to get on everybody's radar, not just the cities, the counties, the state, the government. Because one of the things that's gonna happen is, um, this, um, infrastructure bill that we all anxiously await. We know something's gonna get passed. Well, we don't know the distribution cycle for that. We don't know how that's gonna be distributed. Is it gonna be passed down to the counties or is this gonna be something at the state level? And if we can get it on the right radars at this, at this level in the early stages, they can't deny that they didn't know it existed. And it's not like we're coming to the table late at the last minute. And that was the whole purpose of it. Get this discussed about, you know, it definitely needs to be done. And then just this, all the different entities that are partners and stakeholders realize, uh, from the beginning, when they start thinking about how they're gonna spend their money, that they need to make a contribution to this project.
Yeah, I agree, Bill. We've had this study since twenty sixteen. We gotta make, and we wanna make sure it's on our radar, even before all this spending has been, you know, um, because what'll happen, it'll back up. And then if there weren't all these additional funds, you know, we'll be, the end of the day, it's money that needs to be spent. So where we get it, how we get it, we'll figure it out, but we, we can't put lives at risk, so.
And that's exactly what I was saying about intergovernmental cooperation, but I won't even stop there. Again, as Bill alluded to, I would, you know, take it to the county, state and even federal, uh, if appropriate, and when, uh, appropriate, rather.
All right. Thank you, Eddie. Additional comments? Council members, no? All right, Bill, when do you, when do you foresee, uh, having a scope of work to move forward with the administration and council to have a look at it and say, uh, you know, this is next steps. This is the funding that's gonna be needed. This is the timeline it's gonna be needed over. We, I think that's a critical path step here.
So I think that Stan's probably better fit to answer that question.
All right, Stan.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Bill. Um, in administration's guidance, we have looked at the previous study, the previous studies that have been ongoing for the past twelve years. Uh, they are very detailed, but what we are going to do is hire a true dam geotactical engineering firm like an AECOM or, uh, URS, someone that has a true understanding, not only of the structure, but the ram, the ramifications as well. We're, we wanna put a RFP on the street within the next month or two. Bill, myself, um, his team and through administration, we will, we will put that out. Um, we suspected to be forty-five days because we, we would like to have a quality firm be involved. And then I would probably think in and around the Christmas timeframe, uh, mid-December, we would be able to make an award and start, uh, the beginning of the new year, at least to understand exactly what's going on and then be able to present to council sometime within, uh, six months from there. So we're looking probably in something after Memorial Day of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, if there are no other comments, we'll wait till we, uh, we hear next steps from you guys. We'll, the administration's lead on, on, um, where we are in this process. Uh, it sounds like the more we can keep the public apprised as well, the better. Um, but, uh, the message here is the city's, in conjunction with the Water Authority is continuing to pursue improvements to strengthen, um, on a long again, obviously, so. All right. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna move on here to the, uh, the next topic is, is Bill, this is you again, the Water Alliance and Water Equity Task Force.
Hey, I'm gonna try and make this real short. It's sort of just an introduction to, um, the Water Alliance and, and the, the recent effort, um, you know, that Ra'wah and the administration have been working on together. Um, it's pretty exciting to me, to be honest with you. So what is the Water Alliance? It's a national group that unites diverse interests to secure a sustainable water future. Basically, they look at your present conditions and try to help put you in a position so that you can start planning and actually managing for a sustainable future. Um, and they do that by bringing, um, multiple disciplines to the table. So the idea is that, um, all water is valuable, meaning sewer water, the gray water, the water that, uh, runs off the roofs, water that runs down the street, all of it's very important to our ecosystem. Um, and people need to, you know, be more informed of how it all comes together and it all gets reused. The water that I make, ninety percent of it ends up going back into the, into the system uh, to be used downstream and, and, you know, when Stan treats it and that releases it. That's just the way it is. Um, and this organization was put together to basically look at, I'm gonna say, underserved areas to bring them together so that they can actually be in front of this versus being pulled along. And, um, it's, it's made it, um, I participated in a whole lot of different conferences and meetings with these folks. And it's been a real good place to get educated on some things. Um, so they have a vision and a mission. It's a legitimate group. By the way, this is a group that basically sets the University of Pennsylvania as their home base. So they, they have reputable people behind them. It's, it's a legit organization. Um, the one water approach views all water as important. And, um, it basically says, these are resources that must be managed holistically and sustainably. So the idea is that where there is not like one place right now that the city has a master plan for water, including everything, is to bring everybody to the table and sort of put together that first. Uh, look see and hey, what do we, what can we do good? What do we do good? What don't we do good? What can we do better? How can we work better? How can we, uh, you know, make sure that we're able to sustain if we're in a good spot, let's sustain it. If we can do better, let's get there and sustain that. But without reviewing every little factor from storms or MS4 and all that in one place, you never get there. In conjunction with the alliance, um, they have a, a big push for water equity. Um, sort of the buzzword of today, but, um, the Water Equity Network is, is a second source off of there. That I've been participating in basically. Um, it's a large group. There's many, and, and on our Zoom calls, there's up to 100 different. Cities all across America from north to southeast, was everywhere's in between. And they all can bring experiences to the table. And the, the people that run it group these things where they, they pick one topic and you go in last month. Was, um, uh, presentations by experts across the country on, um. The different verticals and the, uh, the money that's going to be hitting the street. And there are things that I'm, I'm working on now that I learned that day. And there might be some opportunities for us to make additional funds available to the underprivileged and the underserved. So, um, that's part of it. Um, so what's going on in Reading? So, and, and that's really what, what this is all about. So what have we done? We started to collaborate, collaborate. The different groups we have, and we're putting together a committee to get this off the ground. The committee will be the nucleus and then the committee will grow as we get into our work. So we have representatives from the committee from Rawa, sanitary sewer department, storm sewer department. You know, as stands on it, environmental committees, ecologists, DEP, EPA. And all is, is to bring together the attitude of all for one, one for all towards our water future here at Reading. Um, and I've been participating in conferences and peer sharing activities, getting familiar with, um. Other people's successes. There's only, uh, one of the things you, you get out of this is they fund, they give you a grant. They fund the, um, production of basically, um, a manual of where you are today. And where you want to go in the future. No requirements to do anything in it. There's no, you know, you have to do this or that. They just want to come in, help us get it together and, uh, you know, bring us together. And, and I believe that. In Reading, we have, you know, a lot of good, strong verticals. But together we would be, you know, doing the public a, a much better service. If we had, you know, a, a group working and, and working together and making sure that. You know, um, we're doing the best we can for the people in the city of Reading. So that's where we're at with this. It's a new thing. I'm sure that it's going to become part of our, our everyday discussions.
All right, any comments or questions for Bill on the alliance? All right. Thank you, Bill, for that. Um. We are going to move on here. Um, anything else for public discussion, council? I know we have an executive session, but that's the end of our normal agenda. This evening. Um, anybody have any comments for, go ahead, Donna?
Jeff, I would just like for you as council president to say a little something regarding the cast of Mayor.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, I was going to wait till our next meeting, but I guess it's two weeks out. But yeah, I, I think we should, uh. We should, uh, just have a moment of silence for Joe Kuzminski, who just recently passed. Joe was. Not only a former mayor, but a former counselor, but he was more of a steward. Of the city, um, long be on his service in those capacities. He played a very active role and. Very quiet, humble, not always quiet, but humble guy. Just part of certain piece within, um, and a certain leadership. He was always, uh. You know, there for the city and it's certainly a big loss for the city. I'm going to ask Eddie to say a few words as well, and then we'll, we'll have a moment of silence.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, of course, uh, I have extended. On behalf of all of us, our most sincere condolences to the family. Uh, we joined them in prayer. Uh, we joined them in, um, condolences, but, uh, we also have asked. Uh, to, uh, participate and we will be doing so in the funeral arrangements. Uh, more information to come, but, uh, I have asked that, uh, uh, flag, uh, City Hall be flown half staff. For in respect to a former mayor, uh, we, we, who, we appreciate very much. And, uh, who has a history in our community. Uh, we are also going to be, uh, allowing to have our. Many uniforms salute, um, as he will be driven by City Hall on his funeral. Uh, so we are going to partake in the, uh, funeral arrangements through the. Best of our abilities and allowed by the family, uh, to give our respects.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. We're just going to have a, just a brief moment of silence for Joe. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, council, um, there are no other business items for the seating committee. The whole meeting, we are going into an executive session. Um, I'm going to ask Linda to clear out the room and stop the recording and let us know when we're ready for that. For that meeting.
Good night.
No recording, please.